Good evening, everyone. We are about to begin our St. Lucie County School Board Regular Board Meeting, January the 11th, 2022, at 5:00 PM. Welcome to everyone, and I'm glad we were all able to make it and celebrate what we are going to celebrate this evening. At this time, we are going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Kids at Hope Treasure Hunters pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing, please. As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. You may be seated. We are going to start our meeting with a special order of business regarding our graduation rate. Superintendent Jett, would you please take the lead here?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we're happy to, we got our results in last week, and it's outstanding for the district, the highest ever. I'd ask for Deputy Superintendent Dr. Prince to come up, and he will make the presentation. And also want to say thank you to the schools. I see most of the principals and the key support staff that are responsible for that. So we're gonna do the presentation, recognize each school, have a picture taken, and then you can, if you want to hang around, you can hang around. If you want to take off, feel free to take off. Dr. Prince?
All right, thank you, Superintendent Jett, Madam Chair. Just some really exciting news that we got a few weeks ago, and I just want to talk just briefly about some historic results for our district, and a lot of the people here sitting in the audience had a big part of making that happen. So just to kind of share with you, St. Lucie Public Schools earned a 94.5% graduation rate, which is the highest in the history of St. Lucie County Public Schools. Not only that, our Conference of High Schools averaged 98.6%, which is historic in itself. It's literally a 99% graduation rate. Just an amazing job, and if we were given a Star Award, we'd give a star to St. Lucie Public Schools and also our Conference of High Schools. I can't tell you how hard it is from being a former high school principal, Mr. Jett was a former high school principal. The graduation rate is very, very difficult to move, and to have the kind of sustained excellence we've had, there are four districts out of 67 in the state of Florida that have had five consecutive years of 90-plus percent graduation rates, and St. Lucie County Public Schools is one of those four districts. And that sustained excellence is really attributable to the teachers, just staying on the students to get what they need done, the guidance counselors, the graduation coaches, the principals and assistant principals, and the district administrators that have made this our core mission, because graduation rate is really the best indicator of the success and general health of a school district. So this is where we rank in the top 10 districts in the state. We had the fifth highest graduation rate, but we had two ties, but we ranked seventh in the state with 94.5%. And I can also tell you that the, one of the biggest challenges that St. Lucie County has that many districts don't is some of the economic challenges we have in our families. And this is a barrier, but we don't make excuses. When we talk about all kids can learn, no excuses or no exceptions, that's really what our philosophy is. And regardless of the challenges we have, and really those are economic challenges that I'll share shortly. But graduation rates, we rank fifth in ESE, fifth in black, seventh in Hispanic, and 18th with our white graduation rates, just fantastic in all of our groups. I'll get into our subgroups in just a minute. But as a state and as a Treasure Coast, we were at 94.5%, just right behind Indian River at 95%, and Martin County was at 94.1%. But what I wanted to share with some of the economic challenges we have on the next slide is the number-one hindrance to students graduating from high school is the economic status of the families and some of the burdens that creates for the children that sometimes had to drop, have to drop out of school, sometimes to care for other brothers and sisters. And in St. Lucie County, we simply don't let that happen. We don't make excuses. We try to provide supports for our families to make sure that those kids can graduate. And to put that in perspective, if you look at St. Lucie County compared to a lot of the districts that you've heard of in the state of Florida, I just want to point out the economic challenges that we overcome despite some of the hardships that our families have. Our teachers, graduation coaches, guidance counselors, and principals work with those families to overcome those barriers to make sure that our children graduate at, you know, the highest in the state. If we compare our comprehensive high schools, and you see some of the murals on each side of the board dais, out of all the graduation rates on the Treasure Coast, our high schools, our schools are in the top five, and with Lincoln Park leading the way with 100%, you know, we are, it's just really impressive, and I'm just really fortunate to work with such wonderful professionals. But if you look at the economic challenges faced at these schools and the challenges that we have to overcome, you'll see that these high schools truly are performing and in some cases overcoming many of the barriers that are presented whenever we have to work with some of the families and making sure that the kids graduate in four years. Here's our trend line. I can tell you, Mr. Jett was hired in July of 2015. He arrived and hired me with him, and his number-one priority was to raise the graduation rate. That's been a priority that he's had in his seventh year now, and that's something we share in all of Cabinet, and we look at those metrics every single week. But you can see, our trend line started about 76% in 1415, and we're now at 95%. And once again, this is the fifth year that we've exceeded 90%, one of only four counties in the state. I also want to share about closing the gap. I shared with you actually last year this metric. So you can see the same trend line with starting at 76%, ending at 95%. But if you look at our black students, which has been a real priority for us, back in 1415, only 68% of our black students graduated in four years from high school. That percentage is now 94%. You look at our Hispanic students, was it 78? That's now at 96. And our white students was at 79? That's now at 93. We have no achievement gap between subgroups between blacks, whites, and Hispanics with regards to graduation. And that's the same information, just presented differently. Once again, the dark black line is the year Mr. Jett arrived and kind of made this the focus of our goals and priorities. I also wanted to share rate, not just race, but subgroups by male and female. One of our big priorities has also been black males, and you can see we've increased that by 30%. Now 91% of our black males are graduating in four years, and we've seen that increase in all of our male groups. But I want to orient you real quickly to black female, where we've had a priority, but we've had incredible success there, where 98% of our black girls are graduating in four years. But also, a very similar clip with our Hispanic females at 97% and our white females at 94%. So I want to commend the wonderful job that these great professionals have had. My son just graduated about a year ago, and I can tell you, his teachers absolutely hounded him to make sure that he got all of his requirements done, and when we talk about it takes a village, I can tell you, we've got a great, great village in St. Lucie Public Schools with the wonderful adults that make sure our kids are successful. So with that being said, thank you, Mr. Jett.
I want to stand and give you a standing ovation.
If I can have Ms. Martin come up, and we'll recognize our schools individually, and then have them come up and take a picture of the board members. We can just stand up here behind them. We don't need to go down, and then we'll get a shot of them. Ms. Martin?
Sure, at this time, we'll have the representatives from Fort Pierce Westwood Academy come forward, who had a remarkable graduation rate of 94.9, 95.9%. Okay, next, we have St. Lucie West Centennial High School, 98.8%.
We will go right into our special thanks and recognition, our Star Award. Can we please put our hands together again for this wonderful group of principals and APs that have made a difference in our district?
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Jett, this month we have one Star employee to recognize, Angelia Moore, who is a Program Specialist in the Exceptional Student Education Department. She was nominated by Principal Kelly Nygrou at Wetherby, and Kelly writes, "Angie Moore is a true example of a leader. She stood in as our ESE specialist while ours was out on leave. In addition to her regular job duties, you would never know that she was standing in, and she jumped right in and ensured that she met all of our needs. She was truly a part of our team and is a valuable member of our Wetherby family. I know it was a lot for her to take this on, on top of everything else, and we sincerely appreciate her. Everything went seamlessly." So congratulations to Angelia Moore.
That concludes our special recognitions tonight. Dr. Mills?
We're gonna go right into our EESL report. Is David Freeman in, in the House, or someone to represent the EESL?
Madam Chair, I think you probably didn't have an opportunity, but he sent an email to all of us stating that they wouldn't be here tonight, but wanted to express the appreciation for the opportunity, but they had had a special meeting at this same time, and he looks forward to seeing us next month.
Thank you, Ms. Hawley. Also, CWA, I did get her call, and Martha Bickers will not be here this evening. So we're gonna move right on to our St. Lucie Public School Youth Advisory Council. It's Mr. Christian Backer in the House. Welcome, Mr. Backer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Members and Superintendent Jett. Foremost, I would like to wish you all a Happy New Year. We look forward to the wonderful opportunities this year will bring. This month's School Board Report will be relatively brief as we await our January meeting, which will be held on January 5th from 3:00 PM to 4:30 PM, and will be hosted by Fort Pierce Central High School staff. Our council has adopted a rotating meeting location approach so that students may visit each of the six traditional public high schools within the St. Lucie County and observe how each of them operate. So currently, on the meeting's agenda, we will be discussing the implementation of sustainable practices within schools, increasing student access to living essentials by providing awareness of student resources such as food pantries, and developing more equitable busing practices for marginalized communities, particularly for students who wish to be more involved on campus but do not possess the means to do so. Additionally, at our January meeting, our council will begin its process of identifying a vice chairman who will assist me with council operations and potentially fill in my absence after I graduate. Through the creation of a nominee committee, we hope to have a vice chair, vice chairman selected by March. Furthermore, we hope to develop a special committee to investigate COVID-19 protocols and provide student feedback on district grad policies. The standing committee will propose solutions to reduce the spread of COVID-19 while minimizing sacrifices of student engagement. While I'm confident our district administration has thought extensively about this issue, I believe our students bring a unique perspective to the issue of COVID-19 as they have been most impacted. Hence, students may bring about previously unconsidered ideas. We have also extended our council membership to include a council member from Mosaic Digital Academy, thus expanding our council's responsiveness beyond the six traditional public high schools and incorporating the perspectives of our virtual schools within our council proceedings. Lastly, on behalf of the St. Lucie Public Schools Youth Advisory Council, I would like to congratulate our high school seniors for completing a grueling college admission, college application process. Though I'm a significant proponent of students returning to the St. Lucie County after they graduate, we look forward to embracing our students' post-secondary pursuits, no matter where it may take them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christian Backer. We appreciate that report.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go to our consent agenda at this time. Would like to call for a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Second by Mr. Ingersoll and second by Mr. Kelly. Are there any discuss, any items that you would like to pull, board members? Oh, I'm sorry, before I do that, let's get the superintendent's recommendation.
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay. Board members, are there any items you'd like to pull out for separate discussion and vote?
I would like to, Madam Chair, pull item number 12.
Okay, we will pull item number 12 out, and before we make discussion on that item, we will first vote on the remainder items that we have before us. So, board, all in favor on the remaining items of the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Everybody say aye?
We need a motion, don't we?
We need a motion.
Motion.
Oh, I thought I did the motion in the second for discussion. So we're gonna, okay, so we're gonna do that motion and second then, please.
I make the motion to accept the motion.
Mr. Ingersoll makes a motion to accept it, and then I heard Mr. Kelly second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five zero, five zero, yes. So now we're going to go into discussion, Ms. Richardson, for item 12.
I guess I really didn't need to pull it then, because we're going to say all in favor and then the opposition. But I'm going to, to vote against this particular item, because I am concerned that we are going to forego the maintenance on schools that needs it, regardless of what's on paper. Last meeting, Mr. Jett, the superintendent, said that, you know, it's, it's in our, the board's hand to, as far as the maintenance goes. But I am concerned that we may have to not do something in order to get the schools built, because we already started with the schools. And I understand that there are separate funds, you know, but sometimes it seems like these funds, I don't know, carry over, you know, so I just really need to get some assurance, maybe that this is not going to happen, that we are going to stay on task with the five-year plan that we have to do the maintenance on these schools as is, and, and so that we know that these schools are going to be maintained. And also, I'm wondering about the wisdom of going into debt to build a school when we are not at capacity with the, with the other high schools. We are not at capacity with them. So, and it's almost 1,500 stu, anyway, we can go into that, but we are not at capacity, so I'm wondering the wisdom of building a new school. And the growth that has been projected is not exponential. It's, I don't, that's on the five-year plan. That's going to fill a school with a 2,500 capacity, even though we are under capacity already. I don't know if all of that made much sense, but anyway, that's it. That's my concern, using our monies to do things. And in, we can use this money again, you know, for sidewalks, for chillers, for whatever it is, you know, to make sure that our children are safe, especially during this COVID season. And I know we have the, these other funds that we use for the, for the safety of our kids, but I want to make sure that this money is not going to interfere with the maintenance on, on the schools.
Do we have any other comments? Discussion?
Go ahead.
I wasn't, Mr. Kelly, do you want to go first, or?
I, I think we can discuss this probably. I, I understand about half of what you're saying. I don't agree. I don't know if, I'm not understanding what you're saying, or, it's kind of like the same, I know when I talk to you, it's great, because I'm not here with you. But first of all, this is impact fees, so the money can't really be used for things that you're discussing, right? These are future impact fees. And, and I don't know, get into the location of high schools and stuff, but impact fees are very limited to what they can be used for. But that's what the plan was here. I think it says it right here. As far as being at capacity, I'm the one that, I'm concerned about Treasure Coast High School being at the capacity it is now. I think we talked about high schools are, you know, 1,800 or 1,850, and we've got 2,900, 3,000 kids in that school. So I, I think it's something to be discussed. I'm listening, I always listen, but I think we can, I don't think this is the right time to go. If you don't want to vote for it, that's fine, of course. But I think the right time to get into this, and I think we should, would be at that, at that next meeting, coming up real shortly.
At the workshop?
Yeah, the workshop, yeah. I don't have a problem with it. I understand.
Madam Chairwoman, I totally understand where Mrs. Richardson was. When I first got elected, one of the first few votes that I had to make was voting on a temporary school. And Mr. Kelly, you remember that school. It was a property that I wanted to buy, and, and Mr. Kelly was willing to sell it, but powers be didn't want it at the time. Remember that, Jack?
Yeah, it was utility property. I remember it, and I was with you.
It was on Torino, and I said that this school is not going to last, and that we're gonna end up, there's gonna be a recession, and lo and behold, it was less than two years later, we took a dive, we had to shut the school down, and, and I was right. And it doesn't matter if I was right or wrong, I just knew that was coming. But, but in this situation, it is totally different, because we can't wait until we hit capacity on a school to decide to build a school. We have to have the architects in place, we have to go ahead and start the business now and a site plan, because these schools just don't go up in six months. It takes a year, year and a half, and then you gotta staff it. So these are preliminary discussions. So if we do see a downturn in the economy, we can stop. But what scares me, though, is I feel, and I'm probably sure Mr. Sanders, and we've already had workshops, we've worked shop this thing twice already, that, that there is, there's hardly any capacity. When you start looking at Fort Pierce Central with 2,800 students, Centennial with, I can't remember, 2,500, 2,700 students, and you look at Treasure Coast with 2,900 students, how many more students do you want in that building? We need to start putting capacity out there to relieve some of that, so that there's opportunities for, for kids to take different classes rather than, you know, being filled up. And not saying that kids aren't, are getting a quality education because they're full, but it does help to have extra capacity. It allows, I mean, let's face it, we were talking about COVID, and we were like saying that they're on top of each other. They're not on capacity then? So I mean, we do have to, you know, we have to look at the, at all, and we can't, we can't say one side this side and this side the other side. So we do need to start moving this project along. And, and I feel that under the superintendent's direction, they've gone out, they've done their homework, they've invited us to go look at schools that they've looked at. I mean, I don't mind doing that, but we do need to move this project along.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Mrs. Hawley. Madam Chair, I, I understand that, and I'm going based, Mr. Ingersoll, on the numbers that's in the five-year plan and coming from the workshop also. That's where I'm getting under capacity. Now, that has changed within the last, since September until now, but those are the figures that I've, I have been looking at. And if you look at those figures, you will see that we are under capacity, and I mean, it's, it's, it's there if we are going to use those figures. And I understand that we do need to build the schools, but I'm saying that we are like 2,500 students under capacity right now, per the five-year plan and per the, the workshop. Those are the figures. Now, if those figures are not correct, then I'd be more than happy to look at it again and, of course, change my vote. But if that's the case, then that's, that's where I stand.
Madam Chair, we'll present it at the workshop. We have presented this twice. We are at overcapacity with our high schools, and so, and I know that you've met with Mr. Sanders. We've, we've shared it with the board, so we need to make sure that you're looking at the same, the same numbers that we're looking at. I don't want to go out there to the public and say that there's not a great need. Also, as I explained at the last board meeting, the board is the final say. They vote on the five-year plan. If there's things in there that the board doesn't like, the board can pull that, the board can reprioritize that, which has always been the case. So nothing's changed there. The dollars that we're using for this would not be used for the five-year plan. There's, there, and we explained that again, but we can, I'll do that briefly at the workshop, because it'll be the third time that we've presented that information to the board. Also, to say that Westwood High School would not be in need, there's so much excitement now in the Fort Pierce community that that school is going to, to be rebuilt. And, you know, I meet with a lot of folks there. I don't, you know, I'm, I'm not going to recommend to the board that we go backwards on that either. We've presented this at the workshops, at the public meetings as well. We'll continue to meet with the board to answer your questions and to make sure that accurate information is going out there. But we are, when you have high schools that, you know, that are 2,500, 2,800, you know, as the case has been met before, that's really, and it may show that the capacity of that school is 2,800. But with special programs, you could have a special career academy where you're using certain classrooms.
It takes up more space.
That takes up space, so you don't really have the capacity for that many students because of the programs that are within there. But these schools are busting at the seams. We can take a visit to any of them. The principals were here a little while ago, you know, and the staff members will tell you that it's, it's, plus the potential, not the potential, but the growth that is projected, and is already out in the tradition area. area, um, that's out there. It's incumbent upon us to, to be far, to be, uh, to see the future on the horizon as we've done before. Our staff's done a remarkable job with that and be happy, Madam Chair, to, uh, bring it back to you all one more time and, and answer any questions. And staff's always available as well to, uh, to answer questions.
And, Madam Chair, if I just could add one thing, Mrs. Richardson, uh, I have no problem with you pulling something like this and talking about it. This is, this goes to transparency and being new, uh, even though I'm new here, I intimately associated with the growth in Port St. Lucie and where this is all happening. That's why I have a different opinion on where high schools should be. Uh, and, Mr., I was going to say, I'm, I'm going to get you the figures.
That's why you want to bring this back. I know what your motive is.
I said, I was going to say to you, I'll get you the figures, the latest figures on, on this thing, but Mr. Sanders can get them. I think the last time you spoke up here in that southwest annexation area, uh, I'll say it to you this way, uh, when I first got elected a hundred years ago, about twenty years ago, there was, uh, seventy-eight thousand people in the city. We were projected to have, somebody said, we could have hundred sixty, two-hundred-thousand people here by 2020. We have about, taking in the county pieces that are in the city, there's about two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand. Others will disagree because they have a different figure for, for what they did for, uh, for the, for the federal statistics. Uh, it could grow even more. In that area, though, just in the eighteen square miles that we had annexed, which I did not support at the time, but they're there, and now we got to take care of it, there's twenty-eight thousand, I've said this before, twenty-eight thousand platted lots. That means those lots are going to be built on. They're not sold yet, but they're platted, they've got the right to build a house on those lots. Some of them are over fifty-five. A lot of the council members I've talked to don't think that's going to maintain that way. They can change it, they have to change their impact fees, I think. Mr. Jen, if they do do that, all right, impact fees would be accepted. He didn't, he didn't hear me.
No, I did.
Well, it's something more important, you're listening to me. That could change. But all in all, and, and Marty can look at this, Mr. Sanders can bring it back, I'm under the impression there could be over fifty-four thousand platted lots just in that area. Fifty-four, that's another city, that's maybe two-hundred-thousand people, you know? That's how big it is, and it's how important it is to plan for. That's one of the reasons that I'm here, because I know about that property. But we'll get into it, but don't ever, uh, stop, um, from bringing something this forward because that's something we need to talk about. And if you didn't do that, I couldn't, like Troy said, I couldn't bring up my, my agenda. So thank you for letting me do that.
Madam Chair, I'd like to go on record to say that I am all in favor of rebuilding Westwood. That is not what, what, what I'm talking about right now, okay? And in, as far as it goes, the, um, the, what we are talking about, I, I spoke with the attorney today, and she said that if I, we discuss, if I voted in favor of this, then I'm voting for the project. And right now, I have concerns, so I cannot vote for the project. That's why I brought this up. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, are we through with discussion? Are we clear? Mine's clear. Can I get a motion on the First Amendment to the amended and restated Education Facilities Impact Fee Credit Agreement between Reserve Homes, LTD, Verano Development? May I hear motion and second?
And make a motion to approve, I can send agenda item number twelve, Growth Management.
Okay, um, uh, moved by Mr. Kelly and second by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Four one.
Four one, motion carries four one, yes, yes, sir. Okay, uh, let's go right to our informational reports next. And, uh, board members, you have before you the Charter School Monthly Financial Reports, November twenty, uh, twenty-one. And you have those reports, uh, for the following, for the following charter schools, Independent Classical Academy, Renaissance Charter School of St. Lucy, Renaissance Char- Charter School Tradition, Somerset Bethany, Somerset, St. Lucy, and Renaissance Tradition Prep HS. Now Charter Schools' financial reports are presented to the board for only information. No approval of the Charter Schools' financial statement is required. Uh, this presentation is only acceptance of the Charter Schools' financial statements is to be demonstrated, uh, to demonstrate compliance with Section one zero zero two point three three. So you have before you the Charter School, um, reports there. We're going to move right along to superintendent and staff reports on selected topics. Mr. Jen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to go backwards a little bit, uh, right now, the current enrollment numbers, and we'll do this at our workshop, uh, that we schedule, Treasure Coast High School is three-thousand-and-twenty-one students, um, today. Centennial is at, uh, almost twenty-seven-hundred students at twenty-six ninety-one. Fort Pierce Central is at two thousand, twenty-eight-hundred-and-twelve. Um, so those numbers have gone up a little bit since the last time, but we'll, we'll get that all to you guys and, and share that information. I'm happy to, um, last month, the board voted, uh, for the School District General Counsel position, Ms. Barbara Sattika, and I didn't get her an opportunity to come up and, uh, address the board, so Barbara has replaced, uh, Jonathan Ferguson, who is retired and up in Cedar Key. And so, uh, Barbara, please come up, uh, and, uh, she is filling his shoes and is the general, the general counsel for the, for the school district, and, um, we also have her replacement as well, and that will be brought to the board next month. And, uh, so, Barbara?
Thank you. Madam Chair, board members, and Superintendent Jen, good evening. For the past eight years, it has been my good fortune to serve as an attorney in the legal department here at St. Lucy Public Schools. I am grateful and excited to serve in this new role as general counsel. And finally, I would like to acknowledge my parents and grandparents. My life is immeasurably rich because of their love and guidance. They instilled in me the value of education, and like the students here in St. Lucy Public Schools, I was fortunate to have access to an excellent education, and it has made all the difference. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Barbara. And when I say her replacement, she, she'll last longer than a month. It's, she was, um, previously, John, this is for the public, Jonathan's assistant, so, uh, so she's been promoted up, and so her position was vacant, and, uh, we conducted interviews over the winter break. And, uh, so we have a, a candidate that I'll be recommending and bringing forward, uh, next month, that's going to step in to that role, and, uh, I'm sure, have every confidence, she's going to do a great job as well. Um, I wanted just to, uh, we mentioned this before, but I just wanted to, uh, state this again, that White City Elementary was named as a community partner school with the United Way. Uh, there's an award of seventy-five thousand dollars from the University of Central Florida to establish, uh, the first community partnership school. And this community partnership, this will offer free wraparound health and wellness services on the property, uh, to the students and their families. There'll be community and parent outreach, enhanced educational opportunities. I'd kind of remove some barriers that Dr. Prince was alluding to before, um, to allow the students to focus on education, and it's going to launch this month. So we're looking forward to that, and, uh, maybe, you know, welcome, invite board members to go over and take a look at that. And then finally, we have, uh, three scheduled speakers this evening that will be ta-, uh, be talking about, um, um, our, our, our policy and, and challenging to the books. And I just wanted to make some, uh, comments, and we welcome them and welcome community members that are here. This is democracy, we want to hear from folks. Um, and as I shared with the board yesterday, uh, we're kind of like in some, uh, new territory. We haven't really had a challenge until, uh, the fall, uh, that anyone can remember back until the nineteen nineties. And so the policy that we currently have in place was really kind of directed at where you may get one a year, or you may not get one for, for two decades. So I think that's going to be important for us to kind of review that policy and, and update it as districts are around the state. Um, our current policy, we have the formal citizens' challenge, which, um, Ms. Galliano is, uh, has been involved in and, and taken the lead on that, and that's, and that's part of our policy. Um, I've also, uh, a, a superintendent have the right to, you know, look at our operational process, because what I want to do is try to streamline this, because, um, we could go, we could take each book and go out over sixty days with that, and so I want to kind of, kind of streamline that, streamline this process. Um, I also want to make it, uh, real clear that when a challenge does come forward on a, on a, on a book, that it's going, it is and will be immediately removed from circulation, and then pending the outcome of the review process, of the appeals process, um, would remain off the shelves, and then, you know, the recommendation could be to permanently remove that, the recommendation could be to, to put it back at certain grade levels, it could be with parent consent, there's different avenues. But until that process is complete, those books would be removed from circulation, so no students would have access to them. And, um, our policy states that the, uh, the county, we support the principles of intellectual freedom, inherent in the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States and expressed in the Library Bill of Rights and American Library Association, uh, the School Library Bill of Rights and American Association of School Librarians, and the freedom to read. So we're looking at these, these, uh, I've asked, uh, Dr. Wild to begin looking at the, uh, the policies themselves. Right now, board policy requires any concerned citizen to submit a written request for reconsideration of materials. It's a two-page document, there's a front and back, there's ten questions, um, that are on that, and I'm not going to read them to you, the board, the board has that. Um, and then what happens is, um, due to the number of titles that have been requested that we review, um, we're not going to require Ms. Galliano to, to, to send in, um, uh, um, to go to, to every school that, the, the books are not in every school center, they're in the, in fact, the majority of our schools do not have these books, and the schools that are there, the majority of the books are, there's limited circulation, in some cases, two, two books, in some cases, uh, less than five. So in order to streamline this process, uh, what we're doing is what we're currently doing right now, is that Ms. Galliano has submitted, has submitted the, the titles of the books. We still ask her and, and her, um, whoever else to review that and fill out the, uh, the forms that are there, which she has done, uh, for the most part, for, uh, the majority of these books. Again, we could have up to sixty-five school days to review this, but what we're trying to do is to do this within twenty-five school days so that we can act quickly on this, um, and then get, um, make a decision, I can make a recommendation to the board, one way or the other, whether to agree with it or whether to disagree with that, or possibly with stipulations. Um, so we'll try to do that twenty-five day mark, twenty-five school day mark, uh, which will be challenging for us, but this is, uh, an important issue to us. Due to the number of books, the length of time to read each book completely, our staff workload, and the limited number of subtitles, subtitles, there's only a handful of books, so if you have a committee of, of ten and you only have two books, then that creates a logistical, uh, process. But try to work through all that. Bottom line is to try to complete this within twenty-five, uh, school days upon submission of the book to us. Um, we've established three, three review committees, um, that's been put together because of the large number of books, uh, that must be read in their entirety. Um, and, uh, the committee members are being provided the books along with appropriate statutes through our attorneys, um, to go along with them. Uh, the membership that we have right now is guided by our current policy that is in place, and that is the deputy superintendent or the chief academic officer, both of those will be serving, um, curriculum department administrators, content experts slash teachers, a layperson, a union rep, uh, a DAC, that's a district advisory council member that, uh, and Ms., um, we've given, uh, gotten the names, um, from Debbie, and then a media specialist. So we've got that process in place, Helen has, um, has organized that. Um, the final decision on each title, uh, will be provided, uh, in this case to Ms. Galliano, but, but to anybody that would be challenging this, uh, by myself or my designee, that could be Dr. Wild, that could be Dr. Prince. That can be, that, that decision can be appealed to the school board, um, in writing, and, as well as requesting an appearance before the school board in accordance with our school board rules. So that's currently what we have. So in essence, just to summarize that piece, the decision I make, if, um, if a citizen was, didn't agree with that, they could appeal that then in writing, and specifically, you know, the reasons for that, to the board, and then request to speak to the board about The request for reconsider, uh, to share the reasons for the objection, the page numbers, um, in, in our current process, the request for reconsideration of materials, that form we have, we ask that the citizen that's, uh, bringing this to our attention, share the reason for the objection, uh, like I said, which is being done, the, done, the page numbers, if there's specific, um, language that's in there and they want to include that in writing, that's helpful, um, to this. Um, what I would respectfully ask to the speakers that when publicly addressing the board, I want you to just please be mindful that the listening audience here, uh, really is, uh, levels of, it's all students of all ages, it's family members, um, students of all grades, and that I would hope that the language that we use in here in addressing the board would be appropriate, since we already would have that in writing for you. I'm just asking, um, our speakers to, uh, really recognize the audience that's out there, um, and inadvertently could say some things that they may not have heard before. The board has also been notified of some of the titles that have already been permanently removed. So I just wanted to share that, I wanted to publicly make those comments as well, so hopefully that, that, um, is clear in, in what we're doing. Again, trying to streamline this process, uh, the best we can, and, um, and whenever, like I said, citizens bring this to our attention, to do, to do this as quickly as we can, uh, within reason, uh, make a decision, make a recommendation, and then follow that process. At the same time, to begin looking at our policies as well for some kind of policy revision, since this policy's probably been in place, um, for, you know, I don't, I don't know how many years, longer than anybody out there's been here. Uh, again, so, uh, we'll, we'll take that on as well. Thank you. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Jen, for your diligence in really looking into the matter that has come before us regarding certain books in our schools. Much appreciated the work that has been done with the administration as well. Uh, and thank you, Ms. Gail Galliano, for bringing it to our attention. Um, we really do appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Thank you. Okay, at this time, um, we are going to go into our, uh, school board members' reports, but before we actually hear from our individual school board members, uh, we want to first bring before us board members, uh, a, one of our board members, uh, has an out-of-district travel request, request to attend the FSBA Thirty-Fifth Annual Day, uh, in the Legislature Conference from February the first through the fourth, uh, this year, two thousand twenty-two in Tallahassee, Florida. Uh, before we actually vote on this, we want to open it up for public comment. If there are any, uh, one in the public, uh, in the audience that would like to make any comments regarding the public pertaining to the out-of-district travel requests received, uh, from, uh, member Debbie Harley, please, uh, come up to the podium at this time. Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and we'll go forward with a, um, a motion and a second to confirm the travel. Mr. Ingersoll made a motion?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Kelly seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right, now we will go right into our school board members' reports. I'd like to start with Mr. Kelly, please.
I don't have much, I just want to congratulate, uh, our graduation rate again, and it was great to see all the principals here, and, uh, and also you, Mr. Jen, I, to watch that score go up ever since you came here, I got to give you credit for it. I don't have to, but I got it, I guess. No, I will. You did a great job. And other than that, I had, uh, I want to share something real quick. It's a new year, and I had lunch with, uh, an old, old friend that I've known since, uh, for maybe thirty years, and he, uh, well-respected gentleman who, uh, has done nothing in his community but to help younger, younger people and, uh, people that need help, uh, for a long, long time, and, uh, I, I don't care, I'll say his name, his name's Jerome Ryan, and, uh, I don't know if anybody knows Jerome, he's a great guy, and we got into lunch, and we had a good talk, and we were talking about, uh, what everybody's talking about nowadays, you know? Why can't we all just get along? And, uh, there's a lot of reasons why we can't all just get along, because we, we disagree on things, uh, where to build a high school, or, uh, how to get to here by going this way or that way, but, you know, along the way and deciding which way you want to go, you got to be nice to each other, so I just, for this happy new year, for this new year, I just- So I just, for this happy new year, for this new year, I just hope everybody can try just to be nice. If you don't agree, just say it with a smile. Just, let's all try to be a little bit nicer to each other and hug your children, be nice. And with that, I'm going to make a statement. I'm going to even try to be nice to Detroit.
I was going to say, Jack, I love you.
I'm going to be, I'm going to be nice, so nice to you. Madam Chair, I promise, no more, I'm going to be nice to them. And with that, happy new year to everyone, and be nice to each other. Go home, hug your kids.
Okay, before we go on with our school board member reports, I have missed our attorney report. Attorney Molly, shout out to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No report tonight.
All right. Thank you, attorney. Okay, we're going to move right on to Ms. Jennifer Richardson's report.
Don't have a report, thank you, Madam Chair, but I do want to say happy, safe, healthy, blessed new year to everyone. Thank you.
Ms. Harley? Okay. Mr. Ingersoll?
Just a few things. I do want to thank the principals and high school principals coming out tonight. I know they've had a long day and they, it's good to see them. Just, Mr. Jen, I just wish that we could have a workshop on that. I didn't know that was the policy, and listening to the policy, it eventually falls on the board towards the end, and I could be reading a lot of books at the end. When I heard that, I was just thinking, man, I could be reading 25 books in like two weeks, three weeks. So we need to like relook at that.
Maybe I said wrong. We read the books. We do the books. The community reads it, we read them, our staff will read them.
Yeah, but then it comes to the school board and we have to make a recommendation and...
Well, it's kind of like what we do now. I make a recommendation to you, you do your homework if...
Yeah, well, my homework means I got to read a book.
No, you don't. You don't need, you can go to...
Someone's going to give me Cliff Notes. So, so yeah, yeah, I just was like, I heard that, and I was like, you know, a lot of times I like to read all my information, so I was just like, that's a lot of reading. Not that I'm against reading. I read my Bible every day, but, yeah. But other than that, it's been a good year, and I look forward to this year, and enjoy your Monday off.
Okay, my report this evening is definitely, we want to acknowledge the principals and the administration who have done so much work toward us becoming seventh in the state of Florida for graduation rates. That is so phenomenal and so incredible that some people say it's not possible even though we've done it. And I've heard that in the community. How in the world were they able to do that, you know? And so we just have to kind of continue to be clear with people on what we did to make that happen. Mr. Jen?
Dr. Mills, while you're on that point, if you would allow me, what we do, we do not wait until they're seniors. That's number one. We start when they're freshmen. Sometimes we start in middle school as well for children that the data shows us because we have a fantastic data dashboard that Dr. Prince and Terrence have developed that we're able to go in and watch these students. And then our executive directors that are here, we do that weekly. There's a graduation coach on every campus. They're worth, they're worth their weight in gold. And so, and the standard that we're to, that we're held to is the same standard for every county, and it's a national graduation rate. Different states, and ours is rigorous. The one in the state of Florida is very, is rigorous. So we're comparing apples to apples. Those that don't want to believe that, that's okay. I wish they would call, come on in and look at what we have. But it's a lot of effort and a lot of work that really is successful because it starts mainly at the freshman year, and someone's monitoring their students almost like an advocate. We do not wait until their, you know, the second semester like this time of their senior year and say, oh, my goodness, these children are behind. Thank you.
We really are putting, for our audience that is listening, we really are putting the effort into every child every day. And we are focusing on every child and where they are at on the scale of their academics because that's the only way that they can graduate, is that they are able to pass those rigorous tests and workload that a state, comes from the state. So we've always, we've said this for years, we believe that all children are capable of success, no exceptions. And so we take every child where they're at, starting in the middle school, and really working with them diligently, one-on-one, and that is how we've made the difference. So at this time, we're going to go right into our scheduled speakers, and we're going to start with Ms. Dale Galliano. You have five minutes to make your comments, and our attorney will keep the time. Ms. Gail, please state your name and address for the record and when you get to the podium.
Happy New Year, and I'm Dale Galliano, Port St. Lucie. First off, I want to keep everyone informed, and with great joy, I can report that five of the 22 pornographic books that are now under review have been banned, permanently removed by our superintendent, Mr. Jen. Thank you very, very much. Our children no longer will be exposed to the following five books: The Bluest Eye, Tricks, Two Boys Kissing, Sloppy Firsts, and Fly on the Wall. Thank you, and we anticipate and appreciate this, but we anticipate that and look forward to the remainder of them to be removed as soon as possible. And we'll send you Cliff Notes, Mr. Ingersoll.
Thank you.
But until the content of the remaining 17 books will need to be exposed, St. Lucie County parents, taxpayers, and the voting public need to be able to know what is still Ages that haven't had enough life experience to understand the intricacies of this type of trash. Fantasy to reality, lies to truth. You're damaging them for life. And we need to know that you are going to get rid of these books and stop them immediately. Right now, the Florida statute that sums it all up is 847.012. We got Sunshine Law here. These books may not be used or made available to any public school. Ban them all now. 2nd Corinthians, in your Bible, Troy, 5:10. For all of us must appear before Christ to be judged by him. We will each receive what we deserve according to everything we have done...
15 seconds.
...good or bad, and our body of life. How will you be answering for this? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galliano. We now have another scheduled speaker, Susan Sedeno. Ms. Sedeno, you're allotted five minutes. Please say your full name for us and your address.
Good evening, Superintendent Jen. Board members, thank you for allowing me to address the board. My name is Susan Sedeno and I'm a Port St. Lucie resident over 30 years. First, I would like to thank everyone for the five books that were banned since our last meeting. If we have to review each book one by one to have them banned, then that's what we'll have to do. It still baffles me as a, as a parent, as a grandparent, as a citizen, as how these books even made their ways into our schools and that are available for children. I think the issue is, we have to find out how these books got there in the first place. Tonight, I'd like to highlight another book that's in our schools. I promise I'll keep the verbiage as clean as possible because I find this totally embarrassing myself to have to read what these, what's in this book. This book is called More Happy Than Not. The author and the literary judges call this a queer young adult fiction book. It's a cross between a psychological indoctrination with a good amount of actual science fiction to totally confuse the issue. The issue is being a young man who's trying to understand his loss of memory and his confused feelings for his girlfriend versus his new boyfriend. Starts out with his father committing suicide when he was a young boy. He then becomes despondent and depressed to the point of trying to commit suicide. Now, throughout the book, there's a mix of homosexual and heterosexual actions of explicit sexual activity. I'm going to spare you those details because I personally don't want to say them. So at the end of the book, he finds out that there is something that, after all his bad experiences, and he finds that there's actually something that he can do, that there's a special institute he can go to that's going to, it's a science fiction part of the book, that's going to wipe his memory clean. It's going to block his memory. It's going to even do brain damage to anyone that has a problem, lifestyle or issue of things that have happened to them and they want to forget, just going to wipe it out, like past suicide or a suicide attempt, homosexual, heterosexual relationships, death, whatever, hoping to have a life that is easier without a particular memory, any memory. If you're confused, can you imagine a young St. Lucie County student trying to get this straight? Is my life good, bad, gay, straight? Is this a place where I can wipe it all out and start again? Is there something I can do that can wipe out an unwanted action or memory? But there's one more thing this book has to offer, CRT. So you know the main character is a local, a lower-income minority with a boyfriend that is from a better part of town and a higher-income family. Yes, it shows tragedy showcasing the minorities. This book is in three of our St. Lucie County high schools, age 13 to 17. Ages require that parental help and direction as they become young adults. Not a book that confuses the issues of growing up with lies, science fiction, or possibly a teacher that doesn't know them or their true personality or family life. This is another book that needs to be banned permanently from our schools. I know that you're going to read this book, and so when you read this book and review it, you'll be able to see all the things that I couldn't address. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sedeno. And now we have Eddie Evans coming. Is he here? Oh, she, that's right, Ms. Eddie. Ms. Evans, you have your five minutes as a scheduled speaker. Please say your full, say your full name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Eddie Evans, and I live in Port St. Lucie and have been here for 25 years. Did you ever have a tough teacher? You know, the kind that expected you and wanted the best for you and your future? Well, this book showcases the type of teacher, but there are no photo ops or awards for Mr. Griffin. Why, you ask? Because in this book that is now being reviewed for you to ban from five St. Lucie County schools that have a total of 20,097 students from grade six to 12 is called Killing Mr. Griffin. This book showcases and giving the thoughts, emotions, and understandings of five high school students, showing how they kidnap, then murder their English teacher, Mr. Griffin. Why? Because he's tough, and they don't like him for giving them all the bad grades. The main character is mentally unstable. That they know, but is a popular boy, but who is able to manipulate four of the other boys into believing him in what seemed to be at first a simple action of scaring the teacher. He was known for setting a cat on fire and known delinquent in his actions, but appears exciting to those less in strength and personality or status. The plot thickens with sex, drinking, drugs, with each mentally feeding their own fantasies of personal power, strength, and importance, though unknown and unrealistic thoughts and choices now in the process of killing Mr. Griffin. Medication is smashed, a ring is stolen, the widow questions the last to see her husband, a wise and concerned grandmother is murdered, they proceed to lie to the authorities, their parents and everyone, highlighting peer pressure, manipulation, psychopaths, flashes of conscience and guilt. This is not a simple read for anyone, but just the right book to mess up the minds of young adolescents. To make this even more bizarre, California has had this book banned in many of its schools since 1980. Time to ban this book here now. But I do want to thank you for addressing this situation that we have brought in front of you because it's very, very important to us, and we very much appreciate your getting into this. And one of the questions that I would like to ask is, how do these books get in without any review, or are they reviewed? It seems to me with all of the trouble and processes and everything that we're going through now, there should be a tighter testing of what books come into the libraries. It would save a lot of people, a lot of, a lot of time and energy because most of these are breaking the laws. Now, the people that bring the, checking the books that are coming in, maybe they need to be a little better trained, I don't know. I just think that there, there needs to be something done for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lamson. I mean, not Ms. Lamson, this is Ms. Eddie Evans. Thank you, Ms. Evans.